Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee for March 13th. And it is our public hearing. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of courage, and to the mission underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll just do an introduction of members.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenside, Blackstone.
Oh, Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Matt Earnworth, Assistant Superintendent.
And I would just like to welcome Wendy Greenside back to our table, who graciously stepped in for an open seat in Blackstone, and she will be with us at least through the election next year, next April. So, thank you for coming back, Wendy. Report of student reps, I think they're missing?
The student reps could not come. They had a separate meeting, and they could not come this evening.
Okay. It's sorely missed. And Dr. DeFalco?
Thank you, Ms. Vinoco. So, our Worcester County Superintendent, Scholar Recipient, unfortunately is not here this evening. She is under the weather. But a big congratulations to Rebecca St. Amant for achieving such a great recognition. And it was a really nice opportunity. Mr. Dudik and I had a chance to have a nice lunch with her at Holy Cross and see her get recognized by the Worcester County Superintendent Association, and her and her peers from all the other communities within Worcester County. It was a really great event. But we wish she was here tonight to congratulate her in person, but she's, as I said, not feeling well, so she couldn't make it. But we're very proud of her.
Good job. Thank you. And we will be moving into our public hearing to present our FY '20 budget. Send that back to you, Dr. DeFalco.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everyone out in the audience and all of those folks that are tuning in at home. We know how important this particular piece of the work is because, as we know, this aspect of our school district is what helps to fund and drive our school improvement work forward. And so, before we delve into the specifics, and I send it over to Mr. Earnworth, who's going to walk us through the majority of the budget presentation this evening, I did want to just start with a very quick review of our district improvement strategy because this, of course, anchors all of our work in the district moving forward, including our budget work, and making sure that all of our dollars are aligned directly to outcomes. And so, as we continue to move forward with the FY '20 budget process, I do just want to remind the community about the work that needs to be done in our area of curriculum, which is the what of our work, the instruction, which is the how, it's how we deliver the materials and help our students learn, the whole child, which is looking at removing those non-academic barriers that get in the way of students succeeding academic means, and our work with the community in bringing the two towns together around the schools in a very focused and targeted manner. And so, we always anchor our discussions in these four areas because we want everybody to keep these in mind as we are moving forward through the different fiscal components of our presentation. So, with that, Mr. Earnworth?
So, I thought we'd begin with the general process that we followed for developing the budget. First, we began by developing an approved timeline with the school committee. Then, school leaders and cost center leaders created needs or zero-based budgets. They started with no previous records from the year before. They worked with their teams, and they put together a budget based upon the needs for this upcoming fiscal year. The superintendent and I reviewed all of these budgets with the school and cost center leaders. We presented our key priorities to the school committee. We held budget workshops that were recorded and disseminated to the public. We reviewed our budget with the towns to gather feedback. And to this date, we still have continued to modify this budget, which is a work in progress at this point. Here's a listing of some of our budget meetings and workshops. As you can see, we've tried to make this process completely open and involve everyone in it while maintaining the focus on our district improvement strategy. As Dr. DeFalco mentioned, everything that we have done is anchored in our improvement strategy. We held a joint town meeting at the beginning of the process, had presentations from the elementary schools, middle and high schools, the music, athletics, special education, technology departments, and also heard from our district teaching and learning. After reviewing it ourselves, the superintendent and I met with the school committee, as you could see on February 27th, some school committee members may remember that evening, and we went line by line and reviewed the entire budget. And after we did, we held another joint town meeting to update the towns on where things were. So, again, we have tried our very best from the onset through the entirety of this process to be open and to involve everyone who could be a part of it. Two major factors that impact this budget. The funding formula from the state is based on two pieces, Chapter 78 and minimum local contribution. When we hear the conversations about the state formulas, these numbers are most of what they're referring to. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes for the people at home and for anyone else that don't understand what these numbers mean. So, first, the state determines what the schools should be paying, at the very least, to educate their kids. This number is called minimum net school spending. So, at the onset of a budget season, the state determines what we should be paying to run our school system at a bare bones minimum. They then determine what the towns are able to pay towards this. This is based on factors that include the town's population, taxes, personal income levels, and property values. This number, again, is determined by the state. That is what is called minimum local contribution. So, this minimum local contribution is what the state determines. Each town should be able to contribute towards the base budget. After they determine the minimum local contribution, the state decides if they can't make that entire net school spending amount, we'll fill the gap with Chapter 70 local aid. So, that's the aid that the state gives to try to make up the difference between the minimum local contribution and the state aid. I'm sorry, and the net school spending. This year, we received the smallest percentage increase to Chapter 78 in five years. This amounted to $20 per student, or a grand total for the district of $34,880. We are hopeful. The last two years, there has been some movement up to $30 per student for the minimum local aid, and if they do make that movement for the minimum, then we would receive that difference, which sadly would only amount to another $17,000 or so. But that is a place where we, again, are hoping we might see some small increase. Combined with this lowest increase in Chapter 78, this year we've seen the largest percentage increase to the minimum local contribution in five years. What this is showing us is that the state is pushing the burden of the cost onto the So, Blackstone received an increase of almost 4%, bringing their total minimum local contribution required to $6,596,125. And Millville received almost a 5% increase, bringing their total up to $2,178,300. Again, I want to emphasize, this number is set by the state, and it represents the minimum that towns will be required to pay. So, where were we after the initial stages of the budget process? We got together, we worked with our school leaders, our cost center leaders. Superintendent and I reviewed the budgets, and we decided to bring forward three different budgets. The first that you see is level funding. This was based on receiving the same exact dollar amount that was received this year. This budget would result in significant cuts to faculty, resources, and programs. The next budget that you see is our level services budget. This is essentially the cost of running this year's programs at next year's costs. This would result in no implementation of our improvement strategy, and it would leave things completely status quo. No room for growth, no additional programs, no additional resources. Then, we proposed a zero-based budget. This budget would allow us for full implementation of our improvement strategy. This budget was based on all of the needs presented to us by the school and cost center leaders. That being said, we understood right from the start that the towns would not be able to afford this budget, which brought us to the process of making reductions. As I said, we went through an entire evening with the school committee, going line by line of making reductions. The superintendent and I had met and worked with school leadership also to try to make reductions, and the reductions to date have gotten us to what we would like to call Phase We reduced this zero-based budget by $1,571,089. We removed three classroom teachers that we were going to add. We removed two instructional coaches that we were going to add. We removed an additional halftime nurse to support the complex. We removed additional building subs for every building. We also eliminated the process of math curriculum development that was slated to take place next year. We removed leveled libraries, and we removed new resources and intervention materials. We also cut a new groundskeeper position that we were proposing. And lastly, we cut additional equipment that we felt was needed to improve the status of the school system. That gets us to our current working number. And again, working is underlined because this is still a work in progress. We've been referring to this number as our modified FY '20 budget, $25,353,840. As you can see in this chart, about 60% of this budget goes directly to instructional salaries and benefits. So, you'll see the sections that say instructional salaries. There's student service salaries, which include health, nurses, psychologists, and guidance. And then, there's benefits and insurance. That doesn't include custodial salaries or any of the central office salaries. Custodial salaries are included in the plant and maintenance section, and all of our administrative costs, including salaries for everyone at central office, is captured in that small portion that represents just 4.4% of this total budget. Dr. DeFalco and I were having conversations about this budget the other night, and he made a couple of other points that he thought would be very important to bring to the committee.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Earnworth. So, just a couple of numbers I want to bring to everybody's attention. And I certainly, you know, I think they speak for themselves, but they're certainly worth underscoring. Our transportation expenses are 8% of our budget, and our instructional materials and resources, we spend 10% of our budget on. So, we are spending virtually the same amount, just getting kids back and forth to school, as we are on what we're doing with the kids when they're here. That, to me, is something that warrants a very, very deep look in terms of our priorities. And I want to bring everybody back to the district strategy in, you know, in the beginning of this discussion because I think you'll notice transportation wasn't one of the key strategies for district improvement, right? But curriculum and instruction are two of the main pillars of improvement, yet we're spending 10% of our budget on them. So, again, when we talk about how do we align our fiscal plan with our academic plan, I think, you know, this graph captures very well where, you know, where we're spending our dollars. The other number I want to bring to your attention is the out-of-district costs. 7% of our budget is going out of district. And, you know, I think the movie was, was it Field of Dreams or something? If you build it, they will come? Well, we need to build it, and maybe they'll stay. People vote with their feet. And so, I know we've had this conversation before. You know, when we look at enrollment, if you go back to the number Mr. Earnworth was reviewing earlier in the conversation about that minimum local contribution, you know, enrollment's a part of that. And if we continue to see declining enrollment, you know, that out-of-district number gets larger, the minimum local contribution is going to get pushed back onto the towns, that's going to go up. And so, we, you know, we have a challenge in front of us. We need to keep our kids with us. We need to draw in more students from surrounding towns to increase our enrollment. And if you look at instruction out of district and transportation, you can see that we're spending about the same on instruction as we are kids that are leaving and as we are on what it costs to get kids to and from school. So, we certainly have an allocation issue where we've got to start aligning more of our resources to the actual materials that the kids and the teachers use every day to address the issue of out-of-district and try to get that number down and bring up our enrollment. So, just, you know, really important numbers to underscore.
Jason, out-of-district, is that school choice out and special ed? Or is that just school choice out?
This is special education.
That's special ed?
Yep. The school choice out and school choice in is taken out of the state aid amounts. So, they're offset. So, what this also speaks to is our need to be sure that we're providing a program for every one of our students. Because if we're not providing those programs and we're not providing the services that are needed, they're going to need to go elsewhere.
And they are, at a fairly significant cost.
This next slide shows the offsets and the revenues that support the FY '20 budget. If you take a look, there's state aid. This includes Chapter 70 and Chapter 71, which is the regional transportation reimbursement. This includes grants, which I'd like to clarify, some people hear the word grants, and they say, "Oh, boy, we have grants. We can spend that on whatever we like." These are earmarked grants that are given to us by the state and the federal government, and most of them are for Title I and special education services. So, we do use these grants, but they typically offset services that we are being provided to particular groups of students. Circuit breaker, which is reimbursement for extraordinary special education costs. The definition of an extraordinary special education cost is four times the amount that a typical student would cost, or typical special education student would cost. So, the amounts that we see here, and I would also reference, we still have to pay the first amount of four times that amount. These reimbursements are for what we go over four times the amount of the student. So, typically, these are for students that are placed out of district. So, we do see some reimbursement for those expenses, but again, we eat the first four times the cost of the student's allocation. All of these revenues are also taken in, you can see by the school itself. We have listed athletics revenue that's taken in at the gates, in case someone says, "What's the difference between athletic revenue and athletic user fees?" The revenues are the monies that we collect at the gates for the sporting events. You'll see the pre-K tuition that we collect in order to attend our programs. You'll see rental revenue that we bring in from the schools. You'll see Medicaid reimbursements that we receive for the services that we provide through Medicaid. And you'll see, again, the athletics and music user fees. This is it. This is everything that we bring in. And you see the total is $12 million? Is that?
Is there a reason that there's the same thing twice?
I was going to mention, there's two different accounts that the revenue of classroom goes into. One is for the high school itself, and the other is for the other buildings. So, we just have it as two separate revenue lines. The total is $12,459,414 that we anticipate bringing in for the FY '20 school year. So, what does this mean for the towns in FY '20? Listed are the total assessments to each town broken down. You can see the minimum local contribution, again, is that minimum amount required by the state. I've listed the exclusionary costs. For this purpose, the exclusionary costs are the amount that each town owes for transportation. And to be clear, this is not the total amount of what our transportation costs. So, this is calculated by taking the cost for transportation, which includes regular education, special education, music, and athletics transportation. I'm sorry if I said education. The, so, the transportation for regular ed, special ed, music, athletics. And then, what we do is subtract the Chapter 71 reimbursement from that amount. So, we remove what we expect to be reimbursed from the state, and then we split the remainder by the proportions of what each town is allocated. And for this upcoming year, the proportions are that Blackstone pays 72.48%, and Millville pays 27.52%. The same occurs with the additional expenses. Those additional costs are those costs that are above the minimum local contribution and the exclusionary costs. The capital costs are charged to each town based on the debt service schedules for the district, and I have provided each town with a copy of our debt service schedules, and I've reviewed those with each of the towns so that they understand what portion of the debt service their capital costs are covering. So, we're in Phase One. The question, then, is what is in the current modified budget? There are three additional classroom teachers added to this budget, one at Millville, one at the complex, and one at the high school. There are two instructional coaches included in this budget. These coaches came at no additional expense. These were afforded through reorganization of programs that Dr. DeFalco and I looked at and worked with school leadership to reorganize. There is literacy curriculum development and resources budgeted for this upcoming year. So, I mentioned that the mathematics curriculum development was cut. We had originally intended to work on both curricula. We've limited that scope just to the literacy for this upcoming year, thinking that we have enough programmatic materials in math that we can push that off a little longer. There are some leveled library materials that are at reduced amounts. And there are some Wilson reading services and intervention materials, again, both at reduced amounts than we originally had hoped for. So, what we will see in the next phase? We will see three additional classroom teachers, hoping to reduce class size and increase the high school offerings. We hope to see the introduction, again, of those two additional instructional coaches, improving the instructional practice and helping to align our work vertically and horizontally through the district. We will see additional curriculum development and instructional resources. We will see the additional Wilson reading, and hopefully that will be training for more faculty in Wilson reading. And then, we will see the use of additional intervention programs and materials. We'd like to see additional leveled library materials, and we would like to see facilities upgrades.
Ms. Earnworth, if I may, this next phase we're talking about on Slide 15 is FY '21. So, we are already forecasting forward into what will the budget cycle look like for FY '21.
Thank you.
And so, you know, we wanted to bookend our discussion this evening with, really, the whys behind our work. And so, we opened with the instructional, with our district improvement strategy, looking at the curriculum instruction, the whole child, and the community. But I do think that this is really important to understand, that we are building on a foundation. And one of the things that I looked back and reflected upon from the joint town meeting was we spent a lot of time looking at some of the opportunities for growth in our student performance and our classroom performance, but we really didn't spend much time talking about our strengths. And I do think BMR has some significant strengths that we can really build upon and accelerate our outcomes for kids. And so, you might remember that during the entry plan findings report, we spent some time going through each one of these areas. And I certainly don't want to, you know, belabor the point this evening, but I do want to underscore the fact that, to date, the committee and the communities have made investments in our school system and wanted to capture what some of those investments have led to so far. And so, you'll see things like, we have some curriculum in place in math. Ms. Earnworth mentioned that. We do have a K-5 program in Visions, and we do have a six through eight program called Big Ideas. We've done some work around Reader's Work God, which is our literacy program at the elementary level. Empowering Writers, which is our writing support program at the elementary level. We do have some time for professional development for our staff. Not enough, but we have some time to start with. We are one-to-one at the middle and high school. That's significant, and that's been a big investment across the board, not just for the devices, but for the support of those devices. So, I do want to underscore the fact that the, you know, the committee, the school committee, has made a huge investment in trying to get this work in place, and the communities have made an investment in trying to fund this work to date. So, I just want to send a big thank you out to all of those folks because, you know, I do regret not having gone over this at the joint town meeting with everybody, and I think it is important to mention. But the other side of that why is around our focus and what we need to do next. You know, we know our grade-three reading rates are not anywhere near where they should be. Eight is too late. So, we've got to get our kids reading on grade level. Right now, 42% are reading on grade level. Our student growth percentile is in ELA and math, meaning how many students are we outperforming from one year to the next on our state assessments? You can see not quite half of the kids from across the state. We have a lot of work to do there. Our three-year trend in our four-year graduation rate. You know, the high school's working very hard, but they need additional programs and supports to continue to really tackle the goal of getting all students in and out of high school on time in four years, college and career-ready. So, you know, as we, I turn it back over to Mr. Earnworth to kind of conclude this part of the discussion, I do think it's important to, like I said, bookend the conversation with the whys, and really looking at our district improvement strategy. And then, the two big pieces of data are strengths and opportunities that are driving the work in between them.
There's not much left of the presentation. There's not much left of the presentation to turn back to me. But this is where we are. I want to thank Dr. DeFalco for pointing out, we had this conversation while we were going over the PowerPoint presentation, that we wanted to emphasize the why. And the hope is that this presentation tells the story of the work that we've been doing to try to get our fiscal plan to align with our district improvement strategy, and how we're trying to involve everyone in this process to make sure that we're doing the most that we can do with whatever we have. And we acknowledge the strengths, and we acknowledge what our focuses have to be. So that brings us to where we are right now. We do have a modified FY '20 budget that we are presenting this evening, and that is the 25,353,840 budget. And there are next steps. We are going to continue to try to refine this number. There will be additional budget review and refinement. There will be a March 21 budget workshop. We will be presenting and discussing at the Town of Blackstone Finance Subcommittee Meeting on 3/25. We'll be at the Town of Millville Finance Subcommittee Meeting on March 26. And we are hoping, through the final stages of this process, to have a budget ready to be certified at the school committee meeting on March 27.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll ask if school committee members have any questions or comments about this, and I'll open it up, see if the public does. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have one, one comment. I just want to thank Jason and Matt for this presentation. I think, being part of this committee for the last couple of years, this particular night, this particular presentation for the last two years has, has sort of had a negative connotation. And I think that presented, the presentation today really is, the intent is to unify all of us, and I think that's the message, I feel. And I did not feel that for the last two years of this particular presentation. So I, I think just that is empowering as a community. So thank you for that.
I would just like to agree with Tammy, two times over. The work and the, the time and the communication that's going into it is much appreciated.
Will this be posted for people to be able to see, especially the bar graphs of the circle? I think it's, it's really good information.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak with us, or offer us some advice, or suggestions, or? We are meeting again on the 21st, and we'll hammer it some more, but if somebody has some thoughts, we'd love to hear them.
Just a couple of questions, if I could. I've noticed in the presentation, and believe me, I appreciate the time and the effort and the hours I know you people have put in to, to look over the budget. I'm in full agreement with the plan, and I think that's a P-L-A-N, which is a good thing, because that's something I think that is desperately needed. But to have any plan be successful, my, my understanding is that you need to have measurements in place. I think that's one thing we talked about when we first interviewed the doctor. So why I see that we've made considerable investments over the last four years. Benchmarking, I didn't really see that as part of that investment. The town made the investments, the extra monies that was asked. Both towns did. Both towns sacrificed to make those things happen. Yet I see results up here that trouble me. Therefore, given a new regime, if you must, I guess my question is, what type of measurements, benchmarking? You've talked about the monies that are needed, the things you wish to do, and the plan you have, and all those things are good. The world I came from is, you have to have results. So I'd like to know what kind of benchmarking, I'm assuming you're going to say third-party benchmarking. Talking about ourselves is not, self-praise is no praise at all. You need to have some sort of benchmarking in there that can give confidence to the taxpayers of both towns, that indeed what you're asking and the plan you're putting forward is legitimately going to get us from one to two to two to three to make some difference in this. Because without that, the graphs that I just saw, the numbers that you just said, did not spell that to me as we look back over the last four years of extra dollars that have been put forward by Millville and by Blackstone. So I'd like to hear what other benchmarks you're going to have, when are they going to be reported, and how can we tell that we're making progress against your plan, which I endorse, I just want to see what the benchmarks are.
If I may. If you want to wait about 10 minutes, they're going to go through my evaluation. And, and I say that because my, because my, my goals are actually anchored in this work. And so by anchored, I mean they're very specific and targeted around student performance, student achievement goals, looking at both growth, looking at both achievement, looking at the growth of our educators and our, and our principals, our leadership, and our central office leadership team. We also have fiscal, I have a fiscal goal that's outlined in there, in my goals for the year and a community goal. Those are all being developed now into what we are calling an operationalized plan that actually puts timelines, deadlines, and outcomes in a district blueprint for improvement, which we'll be actually presenting publicly in a few months. That blueprint is going to be directly anchored to each one of the school improvement plans. So the district goals will become the school goals. And all of that is driven by the, the information that's in front of you this evening regarding both the overall dollar amount and the additional supports that are built into that, like the coaches, the curriculum work, the additional intervention resources and materials. So I'm really glad you asked that question, because I do believe strongly in outcomes. I believe strongly in accountability.
Oh, you do.
And so part of any good plan has those numbers anchored right to them. And so we actually do have those numbers identified in terms of what does student achievement look like? What are we trying to do? The Department of Education has set for us very specific targets that outline whether or not we met our, our goals for the year academically, from things like student attendance to graduation rates, to student achievement and growth. I will tell you, my goals are more aggressive, to be frank, than what the state has set for us, because I do think we can do better than just, you know, than just average. So that's a great question, and we do have all of that information available to the public if they want to see specifically the answer to your question. I would, I would revert them right back to looking, to looking at my goals.
And I'm assuming your goals then would be tied in and cascade down throughout the organization to the administrators and everybody else ties into the same goals, so that everybody is accountable for what is being done.
That's right.
People in both towns do not have an issue with helping to fund education. We understand, and I'm not going to be rhetorical up here, we understand the importance of that. The key to it is a result. We haven't seen that, and we've been made promises before. And I think that is where the suspect is, and some of the people that I've talked to in my town are saying, we've heard this before, not from you folks in particular, from yourself, but we've heard it before and it hasn't happened. And the results you showed up there, I'm disappointed in. Because we gave extra money the last four years. It may not have been everything everybody wanted, but we gave everything we had to try to help, and we didn't get the results. I will not stand for no results again. I can guarantee you that. We need to have those results, and I'm glad to see that you have those tied to your results, because then it cascades down through your organization, which is the way it should work.
Yep, and that makes two of us. And so my goals this year are connected to the principals' goals that are connected to the teacher goals. So even though we were developing our district improvement strategy from July 1 until now, we've already started laying the foundation of that work. And then, for, for instance, we have a writing goal in place for our teachers, for our principals, and we are putting in place all the supports and coaching that we need in order to get that, and to get that goal in place.
Just from a budget standpoint, if I may, and I know this is kind of a sore subject for everybody. OPEB, any dollars involved at all into what is a ever-increasing amount of money for OPEB and a shortening deadline, which the state at some point in time is going to call in? Anything involved here at all in OPEB?
So as of right now, we've just started exploring options for OPEB. It does, it does require contributions to be made. So that would be additional costs to the towns for us to start an account. Our OPEB costs are not as large predominantly as other general organizations, given that the mass teachers' retirement system is basically, it's fully funded through its membership. So that, that is a large portion of our employee population. But there, it has been brought up, and we are going to start looking further into it.
Do you have any idea what that OPEB amount is? That's owed as a liability?
I don't, I don't offhand.
The numbers I've seen are pretty large, and it's, it's frightening, because their timeline is shrinking. Kicking the can down the street until five years, you're going to have yourself a major problem. You need to address that as soon as possible. And I know there's a new administration in here, and you've got a lot of other things on your plate, but that is something that has to be addressed. You cannot not address it.
Yeah. We have, we have been, I mean, currently, we do budget for post-employment benefits for our retirees and for those people.
Going forward.
Right. We, we've been doing it on-
And the ones in the rearview mirror.
We've been, we've been doing it, we've been doing it on an annual basis, which you're correct, is covering the rearview mirror.
It's okay to stay forward. I got no pressure with you to do that.
But we need, but we do. We need to take a different look at it, and that's something that, that we will be doing.
Did you get extra transportation funding this year that you had from last year that you didn't know about, that the state was able to kick in? There was an additional amount, I heard, that was split into two different years, from what they originally told you versus what it was that they originally got?
Not this, not this year. I believe in FY '18, I bet, I believe in FY '18 we received-
It was an additional amount of money that came in.
We received some additional funding in transportation-
You know how much that was?
From the FY '17 money. I think it was in the, it was around 50-something thou, it might have been $50,000. I, I would have to go back and check my records.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I know that money all of a sudden seemed like it was an additional amount of money that came in. Monies that indeed were not noted, and then all of a sudden they came in as a gift fund, I guess, from the state at that time.
So I can, so I can clarify that. As I mentioned, there were additional funds that, that came in in FY '18 that, that were left off of and were owed to us from a prior year. That being said, the traditional timeline for the reimbursements follows some of the other budget process in the government.
December, and December, and I think April.
And actually, if you go back and look, which I did, the final reimbursement rate and number didn't come out for this district until, I believe it was July 23 of, of this year. So those were the numbers that we are now counting on getting for this fiscal year in FY '19. So when there were budget talks-
They're baked in the budget, you've got then.
Correct. So when they, but when the original budget numbers were proposed in FY '19, those totals may not have been included.
Gotcha.
But in the actuals, as Dr. DeFalco and I are analyzing the budget and trying to make sure that we're staying on target, again, this is our first year living with this budget that we, we didn't necessarily design, but we're watching it very closely. So those numbers that we now know are anticipated to come in through FY '19 are part of our budget versus actuals process.
I understand clearly that you have a negotiation with the school committee, excuse me, the MTA, Teachers Association. That is an ongoing situation. I see that you have even a posted meeting, I think tomorrow, if you didn't have one already that we hear. Are those numbers, or any type of placeholder, reasonable placeholder, is that something that the cities or towns that we represent can count on is legitimate that's in that number, so that we don't get sideswiped by, oh, jeez, we thought it was going to be X and it ended up being X++?
Yeah, no, at this point, all we've, we've put in is the increases and any steps that are, you know, guaranteed to teachers during the year.
So you've done the horizontals and the verticals and figured those steps in?
We did that out, yep.
You did that swag, but you haven't done anything as far as what the increase is going to be.
Like a cost of living, there's been no cost of living adjustment.
That's what roughly 60%, 60% of the total budget is the salary part, I think I heard you say.
Salary benefits, yeah.
You say benefits, thank you for bringing it up. As far as the benefits go, can you tell me a little bit about your insurance costs and how you've looked at that? I think you said from 2020 in 2021. How do you look and view those things for the next two years, if you would, sir?
Those, those, the benefits costs have been factored in as the numbers have come in. We've adjusted what we're projecting. So the, the numbers that were included in this modified FY '20 budget, they were the current projections or offerings that we were seeing from different proposals at the, at the time that this budget was finalized. Since then, we've come much closer to getting other, we're, I should be reaching out to the IAC probably within the next couple of days to try to set up a meeting for the, possibly next week or the week after.
So you haven't got a hard number yet?
So there's no hard number in the modified, it's potentially-
Any idea what the percentage might be?
The percentages are-
That's in the contract, the 25, you mean like 25, 75%?
No, no, the percentage of the increase that-
Oh, I see.
That the IAC may be looking for. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of information out there as to what they're looking at. And, and in some cases, that's good news, and some, it's not that good a news, so.
I can say that-
Yeah, we have some good news.
The, the, the information that I can share is that almost all of the benefit options that we've researched are coming in at slightly reduced percentages.
To?
To, to this year. So we're looking, we're looking-
5%, 2%, 9%?
There's a range. We have a variety of plans that we're looking at. So we, they, they're coming in at various ranges.
With Meyer right now, right?
And, yes.
You with Meyer right now? Okay, and they have a number, I'm sure that they must have at least gone over with you so you can compare that to other plans and see how it works.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Has Meyer given a range of what that increase might be? Because insurance is a big piece there.
Yeah, and we're still, so we're looking at that, we're looking at the other options right now, and then, as Mr. Aaronworth said, we'll have the, the Insurance Advisory Council get together and take a look at those different ranges, but we're still working through that.
Yep. But you haven't got that baked in here yet?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. Those were basically my questions. You also had, where you have the grants, there was a number of, I guess, entitlements that you just have to fill out the paperwork and you get the grant. Okay. And that, that's fair, everybody has to do it, everybody gets involved in it. Any other competitive or private grants or donations or things that you folks have been able to, and I heard you the other night mention the $50,000 one, congratulations on that, that's a great thing. Any other ones that you have, and if you do, do you know what the amount of those that you're expecting in the budget would be baked into that total?
Yeah, so we're, we're waiting to hear back on two others. We did get the one to work with Johns Hopkins for $51,000, and we're waiting to hear back on two. One is another grant through the Department of Education. We were informed that they have awarded the grant, but they're waiting for the authorization from the governor's office, that's over $30,000, to do teacher and principal leadership development together. An additional professional development for teachers and principals collaboratively in each school across the district. And then the other is through a third-party outreach that we had done to work with us around a second and third-grade literacy focus. That was about $25,000, but we're waiting to hear back on that.
Would you say, in essence, now, last comment, if I could, would you say, in essence, that every time the, the state does the moonwalk on the Chapter 70? By the way, I think $30 is probably more realistic than 20. I think that's pretty much the way it's going to go, my opinion, but there's a lot of things that tell us that that's what it looks like it's going to be.
I only base the budget on the governor's original proposal.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's pretty much the way it always starts, but I think you and I both know that it doesn't end up that way. The other thing is, in, in terms of looking at it as a total, do you see any other type of grant opportunities that are available to you that you could take a look at? Now, I understand grants, you got to perform, there has to be a performance involved with grants. So are there other grants that you could look at, or other things that you could look at for external revenue sources to come in? Because I think, in fairness, you're going to need every revenue source you can get your hands on to try to get in. And what effort have you made against that type of competitive grants, if you must?
Absolutely. So another avenue we're looking, so we're looking at it from kind of two different perspectives. We're looking at the grants that will help support the teaching and learning work, but then there's also funding available for some of the infrastructure and, and kind of smaller capital projects. So let me define what I mean by that. So we are putting a small group together, we have a safety committee in the school district that's comprised of administration of various levels, and looking at things such as cameras and different detection devices and that kind of thing to put into, you know, essentially harden the schools for many- essentially harden the schools from any potential threats. And so there is a significant grant opportunity through the state to, to do just that, to look at different hardware, such as cameras and those kinds of things to install in schools to help harden and increase security and safety. So we're looking at, we're looking at not just the teaching and learning work, but also the capital and infrastructure work as well.
I think you saw also February 1, new law that applies now, the OSHA can come in anytime they want. You've got to be ready for that, because I don't think they're going to be penalistic first time through.
Yes.
But you can bet your life they will be the second time through. And they can come in anytime now unannounced. Everybody should have their antennas up for that, because I think they're serious about making sure that that does take place.
They've also tightened significantly the regulations that they're going to be looking for.
Indeed.
So we do have, we actually do have that outline.
Good.
It's about this thing.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know, trust me. Ladder safety, for one, for goodness sakes, could, could you get your $15,000 fine?
Absolutely.
There's a lot of things we've got to be careful of there and look at that. Again, congratulate all of you on the work you've done, the extra work you've all put in, and the amount of time that you've spent on this. I only ask these questions as a citizen and taxpayer of my town, from people talking to me saying, could you at least ask some questions?
Yeah.
Don't want to sit here with nothing, I wanted to ask some questions, I appreciate your time.
We appreciate the questions.
Absolutely.
You say the same?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. This is, yes, please. If I let you go first, I wouldn't have to talk about them.
All right.
Just a few things, and some of the things I had questions Jerry has already asked. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So your out-of-school district, is, is that include the transportation for that, or is that just strictly tuition?
On the circle graph?
That was tuition.
Just the tuition?
I can double, I can double-check, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay. And how many students do we have out of district?
24.
24.
Did I get that right, Ms. PG? Yes, 24.
Thank you, Jill. All right. You had up there about the forecasting of possible staff going into FY 21. So do I take that, that there is a, a proposed budget and a plan going forward of implementing changes over time?
Yes, so we're looking at that phase model.
And have you looked at the percentages of what that looks like per year? Because we're hitting a 5% year, and as you know, when you hit 5%, then it comes off of somewhere else for us as a community. So I'd like to also see like that within an appropriate growth so that it doesn't hit the towns, because this is a big growth this year, and, you know, we have some things going on in Millville that hopefully we'll see how they work out and what happens from there. But, you know, we're at the mercy of the, the governor's budget and chapter 70 funding, then, so I just keep that in mind when you're looking out, and that's something I'd be looking for, is what is that percentage back in growth each year? I realize there needs to be a bump. I understand that, but there also needs to be the bump and then kind of the slow-
A release.
And the slow, steady increase.
Yeah.
So, all right. And you mentioned the teacher's goals, so both of the teacher's goals, the professional learning goal and the student achievement goal-
Yes.
Is all tied back into what you're doing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And just, just so we're clear, this year, it, it looks a little bit different. Moving forward, the goals will all be aligned. Yeah, right now, there are specific-
In cycle.
Yes, yeah. So those will be shifted as we go forward. As we were kind of building the strategy, it took us some time, and so the principals worked very closely with the teachers this year on establishing those. Once that district, the blueprint for district improvement plan is set and the goals are all laid out, then there'll be that direct through line in all of them.
All right. So as a parent, I'll just say that I'm pleased to see that some of the curriculum is, is being implemented and hopefully, because we know through educationally, we know that sticking with a curriculum and seeing it through-
Yeah.
-to see where the actual growth and progress is rather than switching or not using curriculum can hinder our students, our children, to make adequate growth, and which probably hurts the, the MCAS and your report. The other thing is, which has been a concern of mine over the past few years, but is the interventions in the RTI models that are used. I've had previous conversations with a, a principal in regards to that, and I come from a school system that is crazy data-driven, six-week cycles, regrouping, and, and I realize I, I work in a larger district, so when you have a school that is smaller and doesn't have those, you, it presents a new challenge. But I think having the fidelity in what that RTI model represents of not enrichment, not of free study, not of those things, is important for the students to grow. I have a student, I have my own child, who would have benefited from that at a very early age, as she came on and off IEPs by meeting criteria but never receiving that extra support to maintain. So I'm just glad that that is part of the vision-
Absolutely.
-because that's huge and-
Yes.
And it helps reduce the specialized costs-
Mm-hmm.
And helps provide for the general ed population, so. Thank you for your work, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I just follow up on two comments that were made? Is there a place on the, on the website to upload the superintendent goals so that people can view them and see? I know, I'm not sure if the school improvement plans are updated, but just so that there's a visual of that vertical alignment with your goals to the school goals, you know, I know we don't go into the teacher goals, but I still think that vertical alignment for people to see, so when you're presenting, they can see, you know, the data and where it's going.
Yes, and so the, I, I think the goals are posted, we can check that. I did email all of the parents my goals so that they, you know, they, they should be buried in some, you know, in their emails somewhere, but I'm happy to send them out again if folks need them. What you won't see yet is the, because the school improvement plans were done last May.
Mm-hmm, right.
So you won't see that direct alignment yet.
Mm-hmm.
We'll see them in this next round of the school improvement plans.
Okay, I just want to make sure they were easy, if somebody wanted to go on the website to be able to find them, and I'm sure they're posted, I just don't know where, as long as it's easy access.
Yeah, they're probably in some of our agendas, but we could easily add a link to our page.
Definitely, yeah.
I think that might be beneficial.
Okay, we can, we can make sure that's, that happens.
You said two, that was-
Yeah, that was one, you said you had two questions.
Well, no, it was the school, the, the, yeah.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Adrian Pettit. I'm a resident of Millville and also a member of the Millville Finance Committee. First, I also want to commend the presentation. I think that, you know, as a finance committee member, the school committee and the superintendent's office has been very transparent and very willing to work with us, and I think that, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, and we continue to work together. I just have, and we have some outstanding requests that I think, you know, we're going to continue to follow up on and, and work forward on that we can discuss later. I'm interested in understanding where this budget lies from a per pupil and district cost. I think that issue gets raised over and over again, so I'm just trying to understand how, how we're going to kind of compare to what we've seen from a trend perspective through the state or through, you know, around our area.
In my entry plan report, there are, there is a list of where BMR is for us per pupil costs compared to the other towns around us. We are at the bottom, to be blunt, and I believe, I have to double-check, but I believe the number is around 13,500, 13,000, it's, oh, do you have this one?
The last one I have is 13,340. Well, 13,000 for in district, that was as of 2017, that's what I have. 13,354, that includes out-of-district costs. That's for the fiscal '17. I don't have anything from '18 because I don't think it's been loaded. But I mean, where is your budget now, kind of on your projected enrollment from an in-district perspective, to kind of?
Four.
Where do you project that you're going to be? I know enrollment can change, but does this get us to 15,000 a student? Does this get us to 18, like, and?
The enrollment is projected to be right around 1,700.
Yep, okay.
But didn't we discuss that this number's going to be a little skewed from what the DOE uses, because we're using the full amount?
Because of the offsets.
Right.
Yes.
Because of our offsets, you can't really divide this modified number by the per pupil and get that accurate number. So the offsets are, are additional revenues that were never added into this full number before. So I would even hate to misquote what that number-
Well, maybe as we continue to work-
We can, we can. To figure out what-
Yep.
Takes into account, and then go back and look at the projections for this budget.
That's just, yeah, and we can, we're meeting with you guys in a few weeks, so that's something that you guys can just kind of bring back as an open item.
I can certainly put that together, I just don't want to misspeak.
No, I appreciate that.
Because as we said-
Bless you.
As we said, this was presented differently than the budget has been presented in the past with offsets being clearly vis, like, just outlined upfront.
Yeah, and, and to be cautious, 2017 is the last reported state number, so even if it increases our per pupil level, one would assume that that state level is raising as well. So I don't, I don't know that you wouldn't be comparing apples and apples.
I agree. I just kind of am interested in the data points.
It's a data point. It's a data point, which makes sense.
Yeah, no, I'm just interested, I know it comes up, I've seen people with lists of-
We use it, we use it all the time.
You know, and I feel like I've lost my train of thought, so I won't keep your time. Just really good job, thank you very much. I feel like you've addressed a lot of questions that have come up in meetings with this presentation, and I think it was a good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you want to add anything? Okay, all right. So, thank you all very much. We, I took a lot of notes, and as Matt and Jason both made it very clear, we're not done. We'll have further discussion on this in our workshop on the 21st and hope to certify a budget number that will go back to the communities on the 27th. We also do have meetings with both of the finance committees and both of the towns in between that, that time as well. So there's a lot more discussion to be had. If people who view this have additional questions, they're welcome to send them us, that, send them to us, or if they would like reporting out on some stuff. I know people are asking about Jason's data and numbers, and that was shared in our, our last meeting where he reviewed his report and statistics and goals, and we can certainly pull that up as well, too. So, continuing on, consent agenda A. Do we need to do it separately, or can we do it, was everybody, other than Wendy, here for all the parts?
Karen was not at this meeting.
All right, so let's, yeah. Let's do the warrants separately, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Moved by Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tammy, are there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the meeting of February 13th, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jack and seconded by Erin, is there any discussion, changes, suggestions, deletions, provisions? Okay.
There's a field trip.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
And abstentions?
Me too, because I wasn't here.
Two, Wendy and Karen. We do have field trip, right?
Yes.
Yep. To National Honor Society, I'll entertain a motion to approve the field trip.
There's also one for the band.
And band?
Yeah.
No, they're presenting, they're presenting.
They're presenting, right?
Yeah, that's not in the warrant.
Oh, it's in there.
Yeah. Entertain a motion for the National Honor Society field trip?
So moved.
Moved by Wendy, second?
Second.
Seconded by two people. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I think we're good. As far as school committee reports, we had a vacancy in the Blackstone, the Blackstone members of the school committee met with the Blackstone Board of Selectmen and selected Ms. Wendy Greenstein, and we are very thrilled to have you back. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're staying for four years, looking great.
No.
Actually, it'll be five.
Five years, that's true, five years, it'll be great. But thank you very much for picking up that task and joining us, we look forward to it. And this next section, which is the superintendent mid-year evaluation, I'm happy to hand over the end-of-year evaluation right to you. No. We'll talk later. Okay. That would be better than this. Thank you. All right, mine is sitting, I know, can tell you where exactly it is. So essentially, what we, we did, and I know I talked about this in January in general, the superintendent presented after we had collected some of the data from STARS testing to the committee, but we took his goals and set them out based on the state standards, and the committee evaluated them at the mid-year term based on whether or not we felt that he was on target, he was off-target and had some areas in which needed to address further, or something may have existed that has not been started yet. In general, I will tell you that the review was very positive, that the committee as a whole is very excited about the work that is being done, about the collaborative efforts, particularly with the leadership team and moving that into the schools and into the community. We, in general and overall, feel we are very much on target, so thank you for that. As far as the first fiscal management goals, I don't know why they were first, but they were. The first one was that the FY 19 budget will be implemented and managed with a new system that will allow for deeper checks and balances to provide all stakeholders with information necessary to establish stronger fiscal stability. And as you could see from the presentation and people's comments, the entire committee, and I will, I will preface that by saying, there were seven of us who completed this application process. So, but the entire committee, those, of those seven, all felt that you were definitely on target, and the planning process and the moving through phases has really helped not only committee members understand, but our community understand exactly where we're going with the budget, what it ties back to. We've seen the details, and that's been important to us, and certainly has been made available to anybody who would, who would like to see that. So completely on, on target there. The FY 20 budget will be developed and proposed based on the needs of the schools in the district and in accordance with agreed-upon timelines, and I believe we're exactly on the timeline. Again, the entire committee was in agreement that that was on target, and we have met every deadline, and I know that it has met tremendous hours for you, and late nights and long weekends, but we think we, it has made a difference and painted a very clear picture of what the needs in the district are and how those needs tie directly to the district improvement and your goals moving, moving this district forward, so. And then with input from the school committee, the administration will present the FY '20 budget publicly to demonstrate the alignment between the needs of the school district and the allocation of the town, state, and federal resources. And some of us did this at different times, so some of us had seen the presentation that you saw tonight and said we were on target, and one person who completed this early said, well, I haven't seen it yet, so I can't really say. But in, in general, the meetings have been, been held with, with all the parties who have requested them, and then some reached out even, even further with that. So stakeholders have been involved in this process, and the school committee has definitely been involved in this process with individual group and team meeting, so we believe you are well on target there as well. As far as the district's goal is for 100% of all students to show growth in ELA and math on state assessments as measured by their scale score, I will say that it is a 50-50 on target and 50-50, we can't judge it yet, because really this goal relates to state scores, and we won't see those until well after this year is done. But some of the people who did respond, respond using the STAR data, and while we are not showing 100% growth, we are definitely seeing that the use of that data, the use of data cycles, the use of, of putting that in front of people and using data to drive decisions is clearly on target. Whether or not the data will show it in the end, it's too soon to tell. The next, the fifth goal, we'll move at least 10% of the students not meeting or partially meeting expectations to meeting and exceeding. Again, it's a, it's a 33-33-33 type of a, the majority believe that it's on target, some people think that it's off, and, and some people can't, said it's too soon that we're using state goals, but we're very concerned with the third, fourth, and ninth graders, that there's some really, some key data in there that, right now, the trend would be to believe we would not meet that, that goal. And so it really is important to this committee that we focus on, particularly on ELA, and so we like that the literacy is moving forward and is a continued goal in this current budget cycle, so. Got some work to do there. To narrow the achievement gap, we'll move at least 20% of students with special needs and not partially, special needs not meeting or partially meeting expectations to meeting and exceeding, while the remaining 80% of the students will grow within their achievement band. And once again, this is data based on state data, so it, so it's, again, split between the committee based on the way that they looked at it, but they do believe a significant amount of work has been done, and that the mid-year reporting out certainly showed us that there's some, some great concern here, the realignment of special ed and the particular efforts to address this, we hope will result in, in some positive change, but we realize this is an area of great fluctuation, and it, you know, just not sure what we will see here. But it's important to the committee that this, this stay in your goals, in the district goals, and in school improvement plans as well, that we don't lose sight of, of this particular goal. Schools will also stretch towards moving at least 10% or more students to the advanced level, and again, it's, it's pretty much split, but we really didn't have a lot of comments here because we just don't have the data there to show that until we have the end-of-year data. By the end of the year, 100% of schools will show evidence of improving instruction and student learning through implementing the Focus Schools Framework, specifically the following areas, the implementation of school-based instructional leadership teams who will lead in the following areas, and plus areas, the use of effective data, the review of student work through professional learning committees, communities, and the creation of meaningful professional development driven by student need and feedback from our educators. And the entire group that evaluated you believe that you are absolutely on target, we support that 100%. It was great to have Carrie Purcell in the district and talk to us about Focus Schools, the fact that the leadership team is meeting with other districts also trying to do this, and really strengthening Teachers 21 for the science instruction, and just a lot of great things really going on, and I know that it's, it's a lot for a community to, to see, you know, kind of full force ahead, but from a school committee perspective, it's, it's really exciting, it's invigorating, and it's just, we see things starting to happen and teams starting to develop, and I hope that, that, that people get on board with that and really become part of the, the change that is happening here in the district. But we believe that you are focusing that absolutely in the right direction, and look forward to see the John Hopkins Report and all the other things that have been going on. So definitely on target there, and lots of comments here, too. We will also develop a focus on a comprehensive and collaborative process of writing, reviewing, and creating an aligned district curriculum to state standards. By the end of the year, the K-12 science curriculum will be written and revised where necessary with recommendations and plan for resources. And even though that says by the end of the year, we believe we are on target with that, and the entire committee felt that. The curriculum revision is underway, and the process is now in place for other areas. The, it's, it, that effort was supported by the Teachers 21, and the Empowering Writers Program also was a positive thing that we noted in, in the notes that were shared. So we do think that that is starting to show progress as well, and that you are on target in that area. Community outreach, by the end of the year, the district will establish a system and a series of community events to engage families in the community and the work of the district. Parents in the community will be aware of the goals and direction of the school district through receiving regularly monthly communication about the district work in progress. This will be measured through an end-of-the-year survey, at least 70% of families and community members who respond to a school or district survey will demonstrate a favorable response concerning the overall direction of the school district. Everyone felt you were very much on target there, many of the members have attended some of these events. We certainly watch the videos that come out to us monthly, and there have been a lot of communications that go out, I hope that people are taking the time to watch them. But I think that your personal touch in handling family issues that have arisen with families in the district, and your willingness to put yourself out there and be a part of this community and address anybody who comes your way is certainly noted by the committee members. So we look forward to many more District of One community events. To create and apply skills, and the professional practice goal was based around the new Superintendent Induction Program, and we had a, kind of a early update on that program by your mentor, and we believe you're well on target with that professional practice goal. We look forward to, to seeing your evaluation there, but we won't be surprised if it's glowing, because it just, you just seem to, to take that on and, and become very much a part of that. Your entry plan was very comprehensive and clearly articulated to us. We've gotten updates as you've gone along. I think it, it has led you to some great connections across the state, and that's exactly what we had hoped that it would do, not only for you, but for the district as well. So overall, we are very satisfied with your performance, your commitment to BMR. It's clear through your actions, and we're confident that you'll continue to work towards these goals. It's important to make improvements while working with teachers and staff. One committee member understands that change is needed to improve learning, but it's important to increase the staff buy-in. This may mean that some of the initiatives will need to be put on hold a little bit, but hopefully everybody will start to buy in with your enthusiasm and your excitement in this district and, and become part of this plan towards improvement. People think that you are generally on track in your goals and your professional practice and fiscal management, and we look forward to seeing how the state, state results will, will come out. Your teaching and, and learning goals are something that have been desperately needed in this community, and we're glad to see them moving forward. We do lack a consistent RTI model, which was mentioned by one of the community members, but we know that, that we're on track to look for that, and that that requires resources as well, and hopefully that we can keep them in the program budget as we have them now. In terms of what one member would like to see more, would appreciate an overview of how you plan to implement co-teaching throughout the district, or if you do, and really how this whole realignment of special ed will, will play itself out. And would like to see a plan for expanding course offerings in the middle and high schools. And there are members who believe, or wanted to let you know that your work as superintendent is appreciated, the drive and the passion that you bring to the front of this mission while pursuing your goals is clearly outlined and, and stands out to us, and our, your delivery has far exceeded our expectation. We believe you are absolutely the right fit for this district, and it's fun to imagine where all of these efforts will lead in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. So does anybody have anything they want to add? Or anything I missed that I should have mentioned? I didn't read the whole entire thing, I will say that.
Thank you for being all that dedicated.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I have to take a minute and commend the committee for the amount of comments and the time that it took probably each and every one of you for writing this out. I can say that reading through these comments, just recently being on the committee, I know it's a lot of work, and I just appreciate the amount of time that you're putting so that Dr. Divalko can reflect upon them, both the positives and the areas of growth. But I think by adding these comments, it's more transparent and open, and I think it guides his, his goals moving forward, so I commend the committee for doing that.
We had a good evaluation.
I was, I was just about to say.
I didn't mean it that way, though.
But you need to take some credit for that, because it was really easy to take your form and send it out. So, thank you to Wendy, because it, it really has been a team effort. You know, sometimes you send stuff out and you ask for people to, to give you feedback, and you get it from one or two, and, you know, maybe sometimes something else trickles in, but it truly was seven people who had seven comments on almost every line except for one, which we all pretty much said, we don't know yet.
But I think that's important to, to show that everybody on the committee has, has a place and a comment, and, and point of views are very different, depending on, you know, maybe what your line of work is, or what your, you know, so I think it's important to put the comments down so that they can be reflected upon, like I said, and I think you guys did a great job.
And so that folks know, know going forward, we will do this again in, in May-June, and again, we still won't have state records, so we may have to, to flex a little there, but that will be a much more in-depth evaluation, but it has truly been a pleasure.
Thank you. And if I could, I just also would like to thank the committee for the feedback, the time, effort, and energy. I know we spent a lot of time communicating, and I appreciate that a lot, but also a big thank you to the leadership team who's sitting here this evening. I think it's important that the leadership team hears this feedback, because although it's, it's definitely my evaluation, it's a reflection on the work that we are doing together as a team, and we could not be moving this work forward without you. And so I wouldn't want to be working with a different team, so just a big thank you to all of you for your, your commitment and your effort to helping to drive this ball down the field.
And I will, I will say from my perspective, we've talked about how things have changed over time, and this really does feel like it's, you know, it really does feel like people looking out for each other, and, well, this one needs this, so maybe we can do this together. It's, it, I know it has been a lot of work for all, and there's a lot more work ahead, where it's not like, woo-hoo, we're done, because we just barely scratched.
We just got started, so if they look a little wind-blown already, it's, you know.
Exactly, so we're, we're on our way, and, and looking forward to, you know, where that wind blows. So at this point, we'll move on to the National Memorial Day Parade.
So I've been talking to some of the stakeholders, my upperclassmen, the, the music department leaders, just to get their ideas on the stuff that would, would make on a Washington DC trip unique, knowing that they go in eighth grade. So I have the itinerary, I think, did you receive a copy of it?
Yes, we did.
So, it's not done yet, there's a few things, I'm still talking to the people that organize
this to see if we can accomplish, but there's a few things unique to, to what we do, in the sense that the students should have an opportunity to see the, the National Symphony Orchestra, which is one of the premier orchestras in the country, on the Capitol Lawn, which is a concert that's broadcast on PBS, which is a neat experience, because I know a lot of the kids don't get into Boston to see the Boston Symphony, so this would be a, a pretty cool opportunity for them, besides obviously just marching in the parade itself. So, yeah, can I answer any questions?
So you, so, so this is for 2020?
Yes, this is not for this coming May, this would be for the following.
Thank you.
Following Memorial Day.
Any questions?
Yes, go ahead.
What grades will this include?
That's another question. As of now, my thought is to open it to eighth through 12th grade, however, just the, with the purpose being, it's nice to go into a parade, especially one that's televised, with a, a big band. So by opening up to next year's eighth graders, you get to expand the size of the band, and they're, they're all very capable players. However, that, I have not had discussions with Mr. Martins and Mr. Markon on what their perception of that would be. Typically, we just do high school trips, unless it's the competitive marchman, which this is not, this is just a parade band. So I'm not entirely sure yet, like I said, it's, it's still kind of something that we're discussing.
Because Tennessee was middle, it did include seventh, eighth grade, or maybe even sixth, I don't.
It did include a handful of.
If they were in marching band, I think.
Yeah, any student that, that did the fall competitive season was also welcome to come to the Nashville Christmas Parade.
And, so students in the eighth grade potentially might go Memorial Day weekend and then go back another couple of weeks later?
They will be, they will be able to lead the tours.
Or, or is there a way to incorporate this, so the eighth graders are traveling at the same time, and so the ones that are in band would be marching, and then how fun would that be to have your peers in the crowd?
The crowd, yeah, yeah, no, I hadn't thought about that, but that would be.
So it's one weekend for them?
Yeah.
That's why I was asking what grades it would include.
Sure.
But how fun would that be for them to be able to?
That'd be, that'd be a unique experience.
The same kind of timeframe.
It, it is. Do you have pricing yet for?
That's also being worked on. It's, unfortunately, all of the, the big parades, so to speak, are now run by companies, they're no longer like parade committees like you, like you used to have.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a constant, you know, push and pull with the companies, so I'm working on that. As of now, it looks like it'll be in the $600 range, but like I said, it's, if that's something that's still being worked with, with the Music Celebrations International.
Any other questions? So the, so as we're learning our policies, the way our policy reads is that a person who wants to do an overnight trip or late, late night comes before the committee for preliminary permission, so that they can start any fundraising and any of that kind of stuff, and then when the details are in place, they come for final permission, so. Does anybody want to make a motion to, go ahead, do you have a question?
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you be attending this field trip?
I will be, yes.
Parents would be able to go as well?
Oh, yeah, we love having a crowd.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the preliminary?
Yes, so they, if they wanted to start any fundraising or those efforts.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wendy, seconded by Tammy, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would definitely go. And the Washington DC trip.
Speaking of Washington DC.
I was looking at the wrong one, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I came to just share some updates. So you should have received kind of a comparison analysis between the two trips, I think, since my last time I came. And so on one of those, one of the new things that we were going to do is go to, to the U.S. Capitol Building Tour that we did not do last year, but Mrs. Finnegan actually reached out to Senator Marquis's office, and so he's put together all the trip tickets to ensure that we are going to get tickets. His, his aide will definitely speak to the students, and we're hoping maybe the senator would have some time to squeeze in to meet, but the students will be given a tour and have some time to squeeze in to meet, but the students will be given a tour and been spoken to at least by an aide from his office if he can't make it. So, Mrs. Finnegan's really been doing that part of it, the civics of the eighth grade. And the museum is also on the tour that's new, the students had not gone to that. The, what we're, she's very excited about is the dinner and DJ at the Waterford Hotel and that's going to be helpful because lots of time when they did that boat tour, she had to worry about another school being there, so we would be self-contained and have our own room at that place. So, so far, we have 91 students who have given at least a first payment, the second payment was due just this past Friday, so we're still waiting. I did send out another one call today to remind parents for that one, for the second payment, we actually just broke it into three, and then the parents, I let them know again today via one call email that the final payment is due on April 12th because we have to give the final count by, we actually have to give a final count on, if we want to add anyone new, by April 9th. So, so far, the tour company knows that we do definitely have 98 students going.
Out of how many?
Out of how many?
About, approximately about 140 students.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Last year, I had started some fundraisers because the PTO does give some funds to help families, but the PTO has very limited funds, so I had started some fundraisers that the students could do and all of the proceeds that they earned would go back to helping them pay. So, the first fundraiser, students in total had raised $961 back towards paying off on their trip, but this last one included Otis Spunkmeyer Cookie Dough, so that one raked in $2,825 that students are using towards their field trip. So, and we've had, excuse me, I've had quite a few students that have, so I, five, more than five students who more than paid one, over more than one payment, so each payment of 195, we have some students that they raised enough so that they didn't have to come up with one of the payments. And that's just really it, we have to just get, we're working on making sure, I mean, we're pretty sure the 98 is our finalize because everybody has given at least one payment, and then after that is when we would work with the students to come up, the guidance helps make the room assignments, they sleep in quads, four people to a room, and then finalizing exactly which staff will be attending and how many based on the final number.
Anybody have any questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve this trip.
I have one more, one more thing I forgot, sorry. That we already, we already, because we pre-booked the Holocaust tickets, it's a $1 charge, but it guarantees you to be able to get into the Holocaust Museum because that is a difficult museum to get into. And just one more, another point is that this year, we will have a tour guide, so what happened last year is Mrs. Finnegan with her quick thinking, because who would have thought that they would have had a Stanley World Cup tour right when the students were there, and so we did not, she did not want to have all our students with that many people in that area, so with her quick thinking, they ended up spending the day at the National Zoo, but this time, we have a tour guide to help so that she doesn't just have to figure all of this stuff out on her own.
And a motion to approve the trip.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Tammy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so a great trip.
Thank you.
Oh, this is all you and I'm doing it anyway.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm enjoying it. The last item under my report is just the discussion of any potential early retirement incentive for you today. I think the committee last year authorized some type of incentive for early retirement, so we thought we would put that back out to see if that was something the committee would like to discuss and/or entertain for this year.
So, in the past, I'll jump to where Aaron will probably go, where would the money come from and when would it be paid out of this year's or next year's?
We actually already know, just saying.
This year's or next year's? This year or next year?
This year. I'm not in charge, though.
Yeah, we would work to pay it out of this year's.
But how do people feel about that?
Well, what are you recommending? Or you just want to explore it?
Yeah, I thought we would kind of explore what the options would be, what we've done in the past and see what would be feasible this year with what we have in our budget.
I would be curious to see what you recommend.
So, yeah, and in the past, if somebody already put into their retirement, they already got certain payments, they're not eligible for different amounts depending on those payments.
I believe there was a deadline, right?
There was a deadline, one year it was May 1st and last year, I believe it was June 1st that they had to tell us by.
Okay, so you'd be open to an exploration and see what, okay, recommendations, we could come back with.
If as part of that exploration, we could find out what we saved last year, I feel like we had that number floating somewhere, but I don't remember.
Yes, and new hires, it was approximately $225,000 in new hires.
So, well worth it. We have people who would like to take advantage of it, so I guess the earlier we do that, the better we can get that information out, so perhaps we can...
So, would this be, I'm just thinking ahead of the ones who may have already put in for retirement, would this include them or not include them? Because if I'm not mistaken, there was a conversation about the incentive being put out and then people submitting retirement, and then you also had teachers that already put in for retirement, so there was a little confusion as to who would, who would be eligible for that particular incentive.
And the language, so that was an issue, and the language we had last year, and I'm not recalling exactly what it was, addressed at that very point.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have to drum that up.
Yeah, and I could, I know I have it because I just looked at it.
Okay, so we can go back and study this and come up with a recommendation for the committee and have a future discussion very soon on that.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, that's the end of my report.
Okay, that's it, so thank you. Pat, you're on.
My report.
Mr. Aaron Worth, I'm sorry.
May what you will. The first, the first report in the business office report is the salary spend-down report, and I will not try to take an exorbitant amount of time going over things that don't require attention. This report's looking very similar to last month, there were no significant changes on the salary spend-down. Again, looks like there may be some additional expenditures in the Special Education Department. We certainly knew that the custodial costs and the custodial overtime costs are going to come in higher than anticipated, but those have already been addressed.
What's happening with the librarians? Thought they had a set? Something shift or change?
I can't, I can't speak to that right now, I'd have to double, I'd have to double-check the librarian salary. I also wanted to mention, and as I go through the cost center review, I believe that Dr. DeFalco has individually mentioned this, but I'd like to be clear, these reports were developed at the beginning of the school year, thinking that they would be an accurate gauge, but as Dr. DeFalco and I continue to look further at these and little smaller nuances come up within the reporting systems, I've been looking at putting together a larger, more comprehensive report to look at some, to get a more global picture of what's happening with the finances that I would share with the school committee when it's finalized, just to get a bigger picture, and also to start getting closer to the point where we're adjusting the current projections, which is also an important step.
Yep.
Yeah, by April, we're looking to forecast out to June 30.
Absolutely.
As best we can to see where we would be with all of our expenditures in the cost centers and in the salaries, is that right?
Absolutely. On the cost center review, there are a few points that I can make, again, this has been fairly in line with what we've looked at in the past. You will see on the first page, the transportation services, where it looks like there is, you know, we will be over-expending $86,828. I don't believe that that number is accurate. Just recently, in the process of putting together a more comprehensive report, I've circled back with our payroll specialist and our accounts payable specialist, and we've been looking to make sure of what we've spent to date versus what we anticipate our continued need to be in our areas of expenditure, so we've identified places where we think we can release some money that was previously encumbered, thinking, okay, well, even though we originally budgeted this amount, we've spent X to date and based on these projections, we will only need Y we've over-encumbered at this point, and now we're going back and trying to release some of those over-encumbrances. It does look like we will be over in transportation, but probably not that significant of an amount, maybe in the $30,000 range.
It's interesting that the library is off on this also, I mean, obviously, not by a huge amount, but what's going on with the library media services that were over budget and salary and...
Well, that we've spent...
Cost center.
It could also have been that when they were originally budgeted, there were some salary adjustments or longevity payments that weren't factored into the original budget, again, and these, I didn't put this budget together.
Sure.
So, these are the actuals now coming against the budget, and it very well may be that we under-budgeted for the librarian by a couple thousand dollars, or a group of librarians.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're paras.
Except for the high school.
So, did we, did we, we budget in the paraline for the librarians last year and now are they, are they cost-centered by the library?
I would have to double-check.
Okay.
This is by the function code 2340, which is the monies allocated to the library media center, so if they were budgeted as paras, they shouldn't be in...
The two elementary schools are paras, the high school is definitely budgeted as a librarian, I'm not sure.
Maybe a specialist.
I'm not sure about middle school. That might, might be something to look at.
I can get some further clarification on that.
I like the savings and...
Another, another area worth mentioning, there's a couple of, a few big-ticket items on the second page. If you look at the utility services, we're currently reviewing those costs to make sure that there aren't over-encumbrances, it is possible that it simply was under-budgeted at the time, but I don't have that specific information. For 5,200, which is benefits and insurance, I do know that we are, have identified a significant amount that we do believe has been over-encumbered in that line, so we're in the process of releasing that money and hopefully that line will come back down into the more closely associated range.
I had to get mentioned that earlier when we were talking, that perhaps it was over-encumbered.
Yeah.
Similarly, the bane of this document, which has been the 9,300 line, which we know gets offset by certain grants and circuit breaker, we, in the 9,300 line, we've been looking at applying FY18 circuit breaker funds to the costs of the out-of-district placements. We had $205,000 in the circuit breaker 18 fund, which we've applied, so we're recently rerunning the numbers and we're going to hopefully see this number come much closer to where it is budgeted. Again, all of this, we hope, will be in greater detail in this upcoming, larger projection. The revenue report, things are going in good shape as usual, we have been collecting the funds that we're supposed to be collecting, grant monies have been coming in, there's nothing on here that has indicated that there's any concern. Again, for the updated reports that we're looking at, I'm looking at expanding and showing every single revenue versus every single expenditure in every line so that we can really go even into some of the grant funds that might not be listed specifically by grant, but just so we have a whole picture of every bit of spending. And lastly, you have the personnel report, I won't publicly discuss people that are leaving or coming, but just to give the committee an idea of what transition has taken place the last month with respect to the personnel.
And we have posted for the part-time food service director, just FYI, as we continue to explore different options, we want to make sure we are, we are still posting and everything with that, so just so the committee's aware.
If there are no questions, I'll move on.
Are there? Okay, go ahead.
Are there? Facilities report, what you have in your package is the Millville Elementary Boiler Replacement Project Timeline, this is the preliminary timeline for the project. Bridgette was nice enough to break the PDF map...
Yeah, that was much appreciated.
...into a document that can be legible and make sense from a sequential perspective. However, this is the document that I received from the architectural company. I tried to make it a little easier by blowing up a portion of said document, but I think that Bridgette's technique worked more effectively.
Thank you for the feedback, Tammy.
I felt like I was 109.
For those of you wondering, even Grandma Spectacles wouldn't be able to pull this together.
The...
So, so let me, at what point does this go back to Millville with a plan? After July 27th?
No, so I actually would anticipate that at our next school committee meeting, we will have options presented to us for what the different designs will be on the boiler. They will be giving us different options regarding type of fuel, I've asked them to look at biomass in addition to propane, and they've entertained that, so we should be seeing some proposals and also where the placement of a storage unit would be, both for if they were to go with biomass and/or if they went with propane, so those options will be brought forward to the school committee, and then should the school committee decide on specific options, then we will forward them to the towns to vote on and then approve.
So, that will have dollar amounts with it as well?
They should. And the goal is, yes, in order to move forward, they have actually outlined this plan in conjunction with what the towns' meetings have already been scheduled to be, so the hope is that they would, we would be asking for approval to move forward with the actual build as opposed to just the schematic design by the time that they have their annual town meeting, so that we could put it on the town...
This year?
The warrant? Yeah.
Yes, this year.
Yeah, there's a placeholder for it, I do know that.
So, before, this is, am I reading this wrong, it says July, by July 24th for a town meeting to approve, but the town meeting is May 13th or something like that. And my concern, my concern is if we don't meet that May deadline, this is already putting us through next winter before it's projected to start in May of 2020, so how far behind would that put us if we didn't meet this year's town meeting?
I'll have to, I'll circle back with, I'll circle back with them regarding the dates...
Or do we do what Blackstone had to do and call another?
Have a special town meeting, yeah.
In the middle of the summer.
The goal, the goal was to avoid that, so I will circle back with them and reinform them of what the established town meeting dates are.
Just number 15 would need to be adjusted, is what I would see.
Yeah, and I think, Matt, that meeting, the town meeting for Millville will also help them kind of have a full... help them kind of have a full picture of finances and, and help their plan.
Although it doesn't actually even have to be funded until '21.
But they're, but they're on the three year, they want the three year plan, and so that, that would be helpful for them, I think.
I have a, I have a dialogue going on with the companies, and we have a call that's being scheduled, so I'll add this to the agenda.
And I think we should make sure we have a placeholder.
Yeah.
We should definitely double check that.
The JFK project has been moving forward as scheduled. Put the bids out and, I'm sorry, we did put the request for proposals or bids out, and the companies have looked at them and evaluated them, and they have made the recommendation to accept a bid. I included the letter in the package and.
Who approves that? Us or the town?
If we vote, we would vote to approve the, the bid. If we vote to approve it, I think then we should probably forward it to the town.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to forward anything without bringing it through school committee first.
Questions?
Our job is just to make sure it goes with the lowest one.
They have, they have identified this as the lowest bid and.
As the apparent lowest bid.
And it doesn't exceed the project limit.
And they have done their research on this company and have found them qualified, and they were responsive, and they've been deemed responsible.
Well, and it does indicate that they have no reservations, and in our opinion, it is responsible. Yeah, that's what says that. So, the, so this architect firm does recommend awarding of the contract to this group. Who picked this architect group? Was that from MSBA?
MSBA assigns the architect group through the accelerated repair.
Can I make a motion to approve it? I move to vote to approve the John F. Kennedy Elementary Bid Submitted From Homer Contracting Incorporated.
Second. Motion's been made by Jack, seconded by Tammy.
Wendy.
Wendy, sorry. Yeah. Got to look over that way. By Wendy to accept the bid submitted by Homer Contracting Incorporated, HCI, as presented to us from PASKP Studio, the architecture firm hired through the MSBA process. Is there any other discussion surrounding this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? We will forward that to the Blackstone Board of Selectmen? Can we do that?
Yes, I will forward this to the Blackstone Board of Selectmen.
Who is this written to?
Apparently to me.
To Matt, who's also known as Michael.
Michael, also.
But at the top, it says Matthew.
Yes.
It does say Matthew at the top.
And it says Mike.
I didn't take it personally.
Yeah, it was nice. Okay.
Moving on to the high school fire panel update, I have been in touch with both the electrical company, working on the designs, and also with the chief most recently this week. First and foremost, the, there has been a slight delay in, in the work because the blueprints that we have for the building are very old, and we don't have a CAD design of the building. So, we're trying to get a functional CAD design of the building. I have given the, I have given the company a deadline of March 25th to have a CAD design completed, and they've accepted that. And so, we will be moving forward at a bit of a quicker pace at this point. There was also a question that was raised regarding the functionality of the, of the fire alarm system.
Right.
I did confirm with my understanding with the fire chief, there, originally, when the, when the alarm system failed, they put smoke detectors in to make sure that there was at least notification if something happened. After, upon quarterly testing the system again, it miraculously worked fully. They since have done another test on the system, and it worked fully. And it does communicate with the fire department. However, it, the fact that it did fail the first time has remained, has allowed the functionality of the system to remain suspicious. And therefore, they really are insisting on moving ahead with these plans. But as far as we know right now, there is communication, and if there were to be a fire in the middle of the evening, the fire department would be notified.
As, on a precautionary, though, we changed our clocks ahead. Did we check our smoke alarm batteries?
The smoke alarm batteries that were installed were 10-year.
Oh, Lord. Oh, I don't have those in my house.
We do not need to check them every six months. I was clearly informed of that.
Great.
So, I just want to say, I appreciate that you have the answer, because I was sitting here, I'm afraid to ask if you verified. So, I appreciate that. And what I'm hearing is what you're saying is we actually have double protection.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Probably better than we've ever had. I want some 10-year batteries.
But we need to definitely, I'm glad you gave them a deadline. That needs, that was approved at town meeting, and it.
Yes. Even though it has had a delay in the, in the CAD design portion, the, the project was not intended to begin until the summer because of the scope of work that would be required. And it is still very much on target to be started and completed through this summer.
Thank you.
All right, school committee forum.
Jane. I don't even know if we can talk about it because it's not on here, but do we have an update on the roof? Roofs, no?
It's on the facility report.
Which one? The, the complex roof?
The complex roof.
We're meeting with the insurance company tomorrow. Walk the roof.
Walk the roof.
Oh, no.
Has there been an air quality test done?
There's any snow up there.
Air quality tests?
Yeah. Do you want to share that? We did, we did have an air quality test done. Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry.
We must sound alike.
So, I, so I was, I apologize.
This is, this is now news for the principals. We did have.
Just got the results back.
We just got the results back a couple of days ago, and I was preparing a communication to go out to the school committee, to the union membership, and to the principals to share with their families and communities that.
Then if you want to wait and do that first, I'm totally fine with that.
I've now said that we're going to do that, so that's fine.
It's good news, so it's, yeah. We had it go over February break.
We had the air quality assessment done over February break, and everything came back normal.
Great news.
So, when you share that, will there be a written report on, or on that normal?
Certainly. As much as you can figure it out what the range is and.
Are there recommendations moving forward about the dehumidifiers and the things that were in place in September? Is there like a written, like, moving forward into the spring?
We will have a whole plan in place on how we need to manage that differently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, now, Sarah.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Jack.
Just wanted to go back and commend everybody for all the time we've spent over these past couple of weeks and months and year, doing everything that we're doing. And the superintendent's report came back really, really nice. I liked everything I read in it, the good and the bad, the what you're doing right and what you're doing wrong. And I will sorely miss. Not that necessarily you're doing anything wrong, but just the responses. But I will sorely miss you all for the next week and a half that I'll be gone. This is vacation time for me. I will be in Ohio, so I will see you all back again after the 22nd.
Nice, enjoy.
Well, if you'd like to FaceTime us, we would be happy to have you.
I don't get service in Ohio. Anywhere in Ohio.
That was the case. Wendy.
I have nothing, thank you.
Tammy.
I'm all set tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing.
Okay, as I have nothing either. So, our upcoming meetings, we have, March 21st is a budget workshop for us to try to, to hone in on a number that works for the schools and our communities and moves our, our plans and our operations forward. And then on March 27th, we have another meeting where we will certify FY '20 budget, which we will be then sending to the communities. Our next regular meeting is April 10th. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return. We'll adjourn in executive session to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
So moved.
Moved by Jack. Second by Tammy. Sarah.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you all very much for coming to our meeting tonight.